Do you have a position on rent control?
As soon as we see St. Paul make it work, I will be likely in favor of it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's an interesting position. So we're waiting, waiting on St. Paul to make it work?
Well, I have not seen a model that will work for Minneapolis, but.
We're rolling. We are rolling.
This is a real, real, real thing. Real, 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 real thing.
I've, I've, I've got plenty of time. I have nothing else going on today.
We're in the West neighborhood right now, 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 right now.
What was your podcast about?
Okay, so it's called Bottomless Coffee Podcast. And I had an unsuccessful run for the state legislature in 2020. And during that pandemic season, every, at the same time, everyone was like, my supporters were like, we can't stop hearing your voice. You have to continue using your voice. But then also, everyone was zooming into work and we were all looking really nice up top and no one was wearing pants. I started a podcast called Bottomless Coffee. It was very tongue in cheek and I really didn't expect it to go anywhere. But we ended up with an international audience, with international guests. And that's very, really surprising considering how we started, which was like me with a laptop. And the laptop was like basically on the other side of my desk. So I sounded really, really far away. And instead of using sophisticated software like this, we were on Zoom. And I couldn't, I was not giving the guests any direction as to how they needed to sound either. It was, it was a lot of unnecessary trial and error, frankly.
So is it okay to characterize you as a successful former podcaster?
The podcast still exists.
Still exists?
It still exists. Um, I have two pieces of media under what I now call Bottomless Coffee Productions. I have a television show called Bottomless Coffee with Jerome on MCN six, which we talk about COVID-19 vaccinations and health disparities because it's funded through a grant by the Minnesota Department of Health. And then I also have Bottomless Coffee Podcast, but I don't think we've produced a new episode in a couple of months because when Monkeypox came about, MDH said, oh, my gosh, Jerome, you have to do X number more additional television episodes. And I just couldn't do it all at once. And so I put the podcast on hold and hope to pick it up sometime soon. But, you know, I'm a little busy now with some other things as well, so.
I feel like you left off of your website that you're some kind of internet superstar and no one knows. I had no idea that there's all this going on with Bottomless Coffee.
A fun surprise, I've recently brought on a campaign manager to get all of that poop in a group. Because it, there's a lot that's left off of that website. After Andrew, now Andrew Johnson, council member for Ward 12, announced that he was not going to seek reelection. I thought, okay, well, if I'm gonna do it, you know, now is a really good time. I've been Chair of the Neighborhood Organization. I've been Chair of the Public Health Advisory Committee, appointed to represent Ward 12. I'd already run for office once. I care deeply about the community. And so I updated my website, JeromeTEvans.com to just have election stuff and I removed all of the media stuff. And so I really don't want to.
You could have gone with Jerome, JeromeTEvans.org.
I could have. I could have, but I already owned the dot com, so.
Okay.
I saved 50 bucks.
We're, Jerome is a professional. You probably realize I haven't introduced the show yet, so I'm gonna do that. This is the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. My guest is one of four candidates. Is it still four candidates, Jerome?
I believe so.
Okay, in Ward 12, four city council, Jerome T. Evans, running in Ward 12 here in Minneapolis. And you, you're the third candidate I've talked to, Jerome.
Oh, my gosh. Well, thank you for making space for all of us and letting us all share this platform with you. I've met every candidate. I think they're all wonderful people. We all have different perspectives and I'm, you know, privileged to be in a position where I can join them and run.
So thinking about your, your non-candidate life, your political life, you're, you're a politically active person, I assume?
Uh, I'm a do-gooder, I would say.
So tell me, tell me the issue set that drives you to be a political do-gooder? Maybe like the gateway drug, thinking that way, not, not every issue you're gonna be talking about in this campaign, but like, is there an issue or two that drove you to become a politically active person? And like, what, what is that? What are those issues?
Absolutely. So I am well versed to speak on a number of topics. Obviously, you can't live in Minneapolis and be running for city council without centering justice and safety. But the issue that really brought me in has to do with public health. I got hooked basically on doing good through the Public Health Advisory Committee. In particular, I was able to usher through a set of recommendations regarding lead-based paint and the removal of lead-based paint from rental housing in our blackest, brownest, and poorest communities. That is having, you know, an incredible, incredibly positive effect on the children who had previously been adjusting lead-based paint. And it will continue to do so for years to come. And so as an outsider who's never been employed by the city, I thought, oh, my gosh, I can actually maneuver the bureaucracy to do good, to take on a problem that the city has been struggling with for quite some time. And so, as you probably know, if you've seen the demographics, Ward 12 is not the blackest, brownest, or poorest ward in the city, which means that a lot of the good I was doing for PHAC didn't apply here. Since we have slightly different problems. We have older homes and the lead, the intersection of lead there is with the lead service lines that take water from the main line, main city line into the house. When you talk to older people, I know, if you remember this, I don't mean to call you older. You may know about needing to run your tap for two or three minutes until the water gets really cold before you start drinking yet. You know, I grew up in Atlanta. I never heard that. And now I bought, I bought and live in a 1911 home. And so I was like, well, is there gonna be lead in my water? And I think about the, the gentleman next door to me with six kids in his house, who has a house that was also probably built in 1911, 1910. I was like, well, are those kids being exposed to lead? And so that's one of the issues that really drives me. In St. Paul, they're using some ARP money for the city to take up those pipes and replace them. And I'd like to do something similar in the city of Minneapolis, if the funds are available. And money's always the problem. And of course, it is 2023. My other driving issue would have to be, have to be climate change. I do not believe that our city is really ready for the disruption that we can expect with, through climate change and through a future with no fossil fuels or with substantially more expensive fossil fuels. And so I would say those are the two issues that really drive me. But they're pretty wonky.
So I'm gonna skip ahead and you don't have to give me the entire climate platform. But like, what, what do you think is like the biggest climate opportunity on a city level that you could take action on as a council member?
Installation. So once again, intersecting with my personal experience. Yeah, we, we bought this old home and we're like, oh, it's cold in here. That's weird. And there is like very little insulation in the attic when there should be a whole bunch. The secret, though, is that we also have knob and tube wiring. And you can't add insulation either in the walls or in the attic with knob and tube. So I'm gonna play a little game with you, John. When we got the quote for rewiring our home, how much does it cost to replace your knob and tube wiring?
Explain to me what knob and tube wiring is. I didn't know you'd be bringing your own games to my podcast.
Oh, yeah. Well, again, it's media. You gotta play a game. People love a game.
For listeners, because obviously I know exactly what knob and tube wiring is, but. What is knob and tube wiring?
So you would wanna compare it to modern wiring, in the, in like the rubber housing. It, knob and tube is not like that. It's, it's almost like exposed wire with just a little bit of something around it. But it, the way it dissipates heat is by dissipating it in the air around it. And so it would be, it would catch the insulation on fire if we were just to add insulation into the walls and to the attic with knob and tube wiring.
Now on, now on to my role in this game is I have to guess how much it would cost to rewire a house.
Well, my, my particular quote anyway, that maybe I, maybe I got a bad contractor that time.
I'm gonna guess $5,000.
$50,000.
Whoa.
$50,000. Now, we know, we know that the best way to lower our energy consumption to use fewer fossil fuels in my old natural gas furnace is to insulate the home. And I cannot do that. It's not accessible for me to do that when it costs $50,000 to rewire the house. So I've got a, I got a lot of sustainability gripes. I would say like, what can the city do to bring down the cost of rewiring the home? Or how can we make financing more accessible to people who, what did you call me? A media sensation? Who are not media sensations and certainly cannot afford a crazy rewiring quote. And if there are any electricians listening and that quote was ridiculous and you want to contact me about it, you can email me at Jerome, at JeromeTEvans.com. That email would be well received.
Are you using my podcast to solicit contractor bids?
I will use any platform available to find a way to get this done.
That's a lot of money. That's just, that's an amount of money that you're like, okay, demolish the house because.
You and my husband should talk. That's exactly where his head went. He's like, no, and he, he said, you know, no wonder it's, it seems so easy for people, for developers to come in, buy a single-family home, knock it down, and just build a whole new one when it's so expensive to bring everything up to code. And so I really do, at the intersection of housing affordability as well. Like, I am passionate about preserving our naturally, naturally occurring affordable housing so that young families can actually move into Ward 12 in a single-family home with like a little yard. They can teach their kids how to shovel snow. They can, they can like carve paths in the backyard for their dog or what have you. And currently, that's just inaccessible for a variety of reasons. High electrician quotes, just being one.
So what was the last issue you contacted your council member about? What's going on in your email inbox?
Um, okay, I did not contact him about this, but it would be public safety. Um, I had three different public safety issues occurring near my home at the intersection of, which is right on the intersection of 46th and Hiawatha, near Vin Brewing, if you're a beer guy. We had someone drive into the neighborhood a block away from me, get out of the car with a bunch of kids in the area and they, they doused the car in gasoline and lit it on fire because apparently it had been used in a crime. A couple of days ago, very recently, someone brandished a gun at Lake Street. Then they got on the train and they got off at the 46th Street Station and were apparently running loose in the neighborhood. I had no idea because it was 9:30 and my shades were closed and I was reading a book. But my husband came home. He was like, Jerome, what is going on out there? Because there was a police officer at every intersection in the neighborhood around this area looking for this person. And I, I still don't know if he was caught or not, but it would certainly be public safety issues.
Can you tell me how you, how are you different or how are you the same as Andrew Johnson? What can people expect if they elect you?
How many? Well, first of all, Andrew is very nice. One of the nicest, kindest people I've, I've ever met in a long time, I've ever met, I've ever met, full stop. And I am kind, certainly. I'm compassionate. But, you know, sometimes you get the energy out of a conversation that you put into a conversation. And so, you know, as, after I announced my run for office, emailing people, trying to be helpful. For example, everyone's precinct has changed numbers after redistricting. And so I sent out a little map with a link and thought I was being like really cute, really helpful. And one, it's one person out of the thousands, but the one person who replied back in a negative way is the one I remember. And he said, your map was useless. It was basically garbage. Now help me find my precinct.
So did you send this map out in your role as a neighborhood organization?
As a candidate, as a candidate, because caucuses are coming up. And when people, it's gonna be a cluster, John. When people come into the, whatever building on caucus knife, for us, I'm pretty sure it's gonna be Roosevelt High School. They need to be separated by precinct. And so a lot of people for the last 10 years or so have been going to the same precinct number. And now they're gonna need to go somewhere different. And if they're older and can't just whip up the new maps, then they're not gonna know. So I wanted to let people know well in advance. But I, I did respond to the gentleman who took issue with my quote-unquote useless map and just let him know in a firm way that his tone was inappropriate and that, you know, he could refer to the Secretary of State's website to find his precinct since the resources I provided were not sufficient for him. I think Andrew probably would have like gone to his house and like, you know, drawn him a map. It like really helped him out every step of the way.
Okay, so you're not, not as nice as Andrew Johnson. Was, was this guy a supporter of yours?
I am very much an optimist and he did ask for help. And so I do think that people ask for help from people that they intend to support.
Okay, let's move on from rude people on the internet.
Okay. Let's.
Tell me the story of why you live in Minneapolis. Did you choose Minneapolis? Are you here against your will? You're not here against your will. What, so why, why Minneapolis? Why Ward 12? Flatter, flatter your neighbors about how wonderful their neighborhood is, how wonderful their part of the city is.
My neighbors know how much I love them. I am, you know, as Chair of the Nacoma C's Neighborhood Association. In the past, I spent a lot of time making sure the Nacoma C's area is one of the best places to live in the city of Minneapolis. But, you know, I grew up, I think I mentioned this at the very top, I grew up in Atlanta. I went to a performing arts high school, where I took ballet, learned to sing, and also ran track. I then went to Georgia Tech for undergrad, doubled in international relations and modern language and graduated at the top of my class in three years because I graduated in the summer, right? So it's limited competition. Two weeks later, I went to law school at the University of Georgia where I did not graduate at the top of my class. But I did graduate, which, you know, my mother appreciates. And shortly thereafter, I met a gentleman and we dated and we had a relationship. We had a nice life. I was practicing law. He was in finance and he developed an addiction. So he came to Minnesota for help. We broke up. He came to Minnesota for help. He was doing well. Years passed. I think it was after, it was after one of, one of the great recessions, right? And I was a real estate attorney and I thought, well, what am I gonna do? What, what, what's next for me? Because I can't just keep pushing papers. And by text, we rekindled a romance. And then when I got to Minnesota, John, I realized that exes are exes for a reason. But Minnesota's great. It was August, you know, and so we were all like walking around. It's like Smurfs is super important that we all be outside. And a week after breaking up with my ex, I met my now husband, Go Fake. And he bought a condo in Ward 12, right across the street from Mini Haha Park. Now, if you haven't lived in Atlanta, you don't know that there are not nearly as many parks there as there are here. People do not avail themselves of the natural resources there like they do here because they're, they're not as abundant. People also don't seem to care as much about the environment. I thought I was an environmentalist in Atlanta because I recycled. Okay, so it was, it was a very low bar to be an environmental activist.
It's hard to compete with people in Minneapolis on environmentalism.
Agreed. But it's the thing that really sticks out to me about my neighbors, my community, is that we really care about each other. The brief story I like to tell is that my husband has taken up biking. Obviously, we've got some great trails down here. He bought me a bike too, because he's a good husband. And I went out one day without a helmet. And leaving the building, my, my neighbor was like, where's your helmet, Jerome? And I was like, oh, biked on by. Two blocks away, a neighbor over the fence, Jerome, why are you biking without a helmet? And so on. And so I really do feel as though, Ward 12 is the kind of place where people like to keep you in line. People like to make sure that you're doing what you need to do to be safe and to thrive because we really do care about each other. And I think that's, that's not something you can find in every community. And it's one of the reasons why I'm so proud to run to represent people like that on the Minneapolis City Council.
Okay, it's time to get into the thorny issues.
Oh, thorns. This is, this has been so easy. Four thought balls, please.
This could end up going an hour. Jerome, you're gonna be, you, you're high-energy and cheerful now, but wait until we get to minute 60. So public safety, we have been having this, you've mentioned public safety. We've been having this public safety debate for years. What, what can you do to keep people safe as a city council member? And what are the limitations of the role in that regard?
Well, the, the limitations in particular are new and still being explored after we, after we changed to a strong mayor form of government. But the city council still has the power of the purse. And one thing, one opportunity that I think the current council is dropping the ball on has to do with neighborhood funding. Now, at NINA, one grant that we were able to provide when appropriately funded had to do with residents installing or being reimbursed for installing home security systems for their own homes. You know, as your city council person, I will not be out walking the streets. My presence does nothing to deter crime, but we can make ourselves certainly harder targets, right? And I think funding programs like that, that do make people feel safe, is important. I also think we've got a real poverty problem in Minneapolis that we need to address in a significant way. I am not, at the intersection of public safety and housing, I am not seeing the level of investment that I would like to see from the state, from the county, or from the city. And I'm, I can't really speak to how aggressively the city is advocating for additional funds from the county or wanting to partner with the county to address our housing and homelessness problem. And that intersection that I'm speaking of in particular, that where I'm drawing from personal experience has to do with the train, which runs right near my house, being, I believe, still the second largest shelter in the state of Minnesota.
So are we gonna continue? Do you think the debate about police staffing is over? That's one thing I think a lot about. They elected, the 2021 election didn't seem to, like I thought before then. Didn't matter who got elected, whether it's Michael Rainville or Steve Fletcher in Ward Three. The trajectory on police staffing is, was pretty much set. It was on the way down. It seems to still be on the way down despite all the efforts to like, put it on the upswing. And I don't feel like we're, the city council is having those annual police staffing budget fights that they used to simply because like the police, from my perspective, sort of have decided to dismantle themselves and abandon ship. So what is your assessment? I, I feel like there are gonna be some city council candidates who like run on the police staffing issue. And I don't know how productive banging that drum is. And I wonder if we're gonna have the right conversation this year about public safety. Like, like what, what is the conversation to have? What should we be talking about with MPD and staffing?
Okay, well, that is a rich question that I will do my best to untangle.
Sometimes my questions aren't really questions. It's just, they're just feelings and I'm asking you to respond to my feeling.
And I think that might be at the heart of, of a role of a city council person is to parse what someone is, is sending you, the energy and words that someone is sending you and turn that into actual policy. I think you're absolutely right that we need to have a broad, citywide conversation about where we are with regard to public safety. I don't think it's staffing at MPD. I think it's more like, why don't people want to work at the, at MPD, right? Like, I think intuitively, we know why. It's, it sounds like a horrible job and someone there murdered someone. And anywhere you go, you're gonna be associated with that person and that act. So what has Minneapolis done to turn the page from what happened in 2020? Like, how have we, how, what's changed in Minneapolis? And how is MPD working to build trust in communities? I think that is where the conversation needs to be. It needs to be more focused on resolving our shared trauma. It needs to be focused on what we're asking police to respond to that they should not be responding to. It's gotta be about how we're trying to increase hiring for a job that currently has people responding from one crisis to another crisis to another crisis until, you know, apparently they experience a level of trauma that they feel entitles them to leave. But I think, I think that's where we likely need to be centering our conversation when it comes to public safety if we are going to, as we have decided to do, keep the Minneapolis Police Department.
So the, the state of Minnesota has judged, the Human Rights Department has judged MPD to be, the way I read the report, dysfunctional, racist, I would say corrupt. And so are we on the right path to fixing that? I know it's kind of early in that and, and we're still waiting for the, the federal government to come out with their, their findings and a potential consent decree there. Are we taking the right steps? Should we be doing more?
Oh, I absolutely think that we should be doing more. And, you know, since it sounds like you've read the report, as one of the black politicians who was running in 2020 and who may have been basically cyber stalked by the police, I can certainly say that my relationship with MPD is even more complicated than it was just by virtue of me being a black gay man in America, right? So, no, I would not say that we have even really begun to scratch the surface. I was very opposed to, I'm trying not to cuss on your podcast. I was very, oh, thank you. Let's continue now. Let's liberate. Very opposed to what seemed to be a slow-walking of a consent decree with the Human Rights Department. Because everyone should be on the same page that, you know, whatever we have been doing collectively as a city was sending us in the wrong direction and we need to have an outside entity come in and get us on the right track. So, yeah, I, I found that very, I found that deeply frustrating. The civilian oversight legislation or ordinance that just passed, I feel was rushed. The Abigail Sarah, the former Chair of the Police Conduct Oversight Commission, has endorsed my campaign. And so I feel as though our thoughts align on police accountability. But there is, there is a lot of work that needs to be done, frankly. And I don't think it's a defund issue. I don't think it's a staffing issue. I do think it is in part an accountability issue. I do think it is in part an accountability issue, but the heart of the issue and the part that I have trouble with, because it's really tough as a city council person to get to this issue is how do you stop police brutality? There is a lot of conversation about how we hold officers accountable after they've committed a horrible act. But how do we back up and prevent the horrible act from occurring in the first place? And that's all, that, that's where my head is at when I think about actions city council has taken. And I have not seen any actions that really address the heart of the matter. But certainly agreeing to the many, the uh, human rights department's consent decree would be a step in that direction.
So, so unfortunately, as a city council member, you have limited uh power with regard to policy. It's, it's all in the budget. And what I, what I've thought a lot about is we don't talk about uh the, we, we talk some about it, but not enough. We talk mostly about like uh the actions of individual officers or this is about the cops. And it is about the cops and it's also about policing as an institution. But with MPD in particular, I think uh, like the, the popularity of Chief Aradondo, I think stopped us from having a conversation about leadership. Really, the degree to which MPD is a dysfunctional organization has some to do with the union, but also with like, this is a terribly dysfunctional organization. As you mentioned, police don't wanna work there, uh, probably in part for that reason. And this might, this Jerome, this might not be a question again. Are we, are we talking enough about like how poorly led MPD is? And I don't know if we are, I mean, we have a new chief, so hope for the best, but uh, I, I don't know. Do, do you think Aradondo's personal popularity stopped us from talking about how poorly led MPD was over the last uh, you know?
No, because the conversation didn't start there, you know? Um, and so certainly, certainly he was popular. But I, I don't think so. I also wanna just circle back to the influence of a council member because, you know, the, I don't know if you've ever had someone else in charge of your money, but they, they still do carry great influence over your life. Um, and I think that uh we, we should have a robust conversation about exactly what powers city council still retains. And explore the limits of that power, particularly the area of uh creating a more functional MPD.
I think we have explored the limits of that power a little bit.
You just started. We just got.
What happened, what happens when you try to use the budget to influence police policy is you, the mayor beats you over the head with a headline after headline of Jerome is trying to defund the police. Uh, Jerome is the, the bad man and uh crime, blood is on your hands is, is a phrase that will be used against you if you try to use the budget to influence uh police policy, I think.
There, you know, there is something to be said for having someone on council with a little media savvy of their own in that case.
Okay, uh, podcasting superstar Jerome Evans.
You, I think you have to do the best you can with the power that you have. I think that's a foundational uh value of mine. Um, and I, you know, you, you may very well be right, but neither one of us has ever sat in that seat. And when I get there, I'm going to do my damnedest to use, to pull every lever, get this city working the way it ought to be working. I, I can give you that. I can give you that much.
So I asked you for contrast earlier with the current city council member. Tell me what you offer that other candidates in this race uh than the other candidates in this race. How are you different? And you, you are allowed to be mean if you want to be, or you can be nice.
Oh, that's kind of a view. Um, I don't think it's, I really don't think it's a difficult choice. I don't think it's gonna be a difficult choice for a lot of people in war 12. I, I seem to be the only candidate in this race with a track record. That whole website that you referred to earlier is just about what I have done. Now that I've got my campaign man, campaign manager, our conversation today for four hours was about incorporating the message of what we are going to do for war 12. So we've already built a solid base just based on uh my deep ties to this community. And now it's about getting the word out about all of the good that we can do uh when we work together uh for a mighty Minneapolis.
Do you think uh under the new, we referenced the new government structure earlier. Do you think our current council has used their power to hold the mayor accountable? Is there more that should be done?
Okay, um, well, uh, the, to hold the mayor accountable, accountable for what in particular?
I don't know. So we, we have a new government structure and we're kind of fleshing it out. Nobody knows really what it means. And so as they were doing that whole government structure ordinance, it felt like the council just left it to the mayor to come up with his plan. And then he delivered it to them and with uh very little modification, you know, they, they let the mayor set the starting point for that. And I feel like we don't have a very assertive city council when it comes to the mayor. They're not coming and saying, this is how it's gonna be and you respond to us. It's, well, the mayor wants this and we're gonna give it to him kinda thing. So, things like that. Also, like, I don't know, uh, executive branch functions oversight over that. I just, I don't feel, to put it simply, that, that we have a, a city council that's willing to stand up to the mayor.
And I think part of that is that our city council seems to be divided along ideological lines and not really working together. And I, I think it was actually on your Twitter of, I was following along one day and I was like, why are city council members bickering or arguing in public against each other? You know, um, I don't, I.
What was the topic?
Oh, I can't, I can't recall the topic. It was, it was relatively recently.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna be a lot of bickering when you get to city hall, Jerome.
I, well, you know, I do my bickering behind the scenes.
Then I don't get, I don't get to see it. I, you know, I enjoy.
Amendments, amendment, there was a bunch of amendments that were coming through. And it was like, someone was presenting amendments that other council people had not seen yet.
I think you underestimate, I, you underestimate how good public disagreement is though, I think.
Oh, sure.
It really like, it shines a light on the differences. And I think it's very, it's educational to see people disagree in public because you can see, you know, Lisa Goodman can, can make her best case and the other side can make their best case. And I think it's educational. I don't, I don't want a fully formed policy delivered out in the open that was hashed out uh behind the scenes. I, I like a little debate.
I think the debate, the, the debate, I think the debate comes during uh the community process. When we are, when you have the public uh forums and you let people really gather and hear uh about the new policy and give their feedback. And I think council should be emailing probably all the time regarding amendments and the like. I do not believe that the time to uh shock someone or to share a new amendment with someone is right before they're voting on it. Because how is your council person supposed to make an informed decision, informed by the community in that moment? It's just, it's just not a great way to work in my mind, but we are allowed, we are allowed to disagree.
Oh, I don't, I don't think we disagree that much. I just say.
Okay.
I enjoy, uh, I mean, people don't have to be mean about it, but I do enjoy a council uh meeting with lots of disagreement because otherwise, I mean, it's a way to illustrate for the public what, what's the heart of the issue ideally. Ideally, they're not arguing over something petty. It's something substantive and meaningful.
But what it says to me is that the council is not communicating and certainly not communicating effectively behind closed doors. So how are they supposed to come together and act as a check on the executive when they're not working together? So what, that, that example to me was a symptom of a broader concern that I have about the way city council is currently functioning.
Jerome, give me your housing and zoning philosophy. You could maybe incorporate the 2040 plan into this answer because uh the city is currently being sued by uh what, what I have often characterized as pretend environmentalists. Uh, so how, how do you feel about dense pedestrianized cities? Uh, the 2040 plan, housing, apartments, parking? These are the things you're gonna spend a lot of your time being yelled at about. So how do you feel about all of those things? What's your philosophy of zoning and housing?
I think we all want, I think we all love walkable. We all want a walkable city or at least to live in a walkable neighborhood. I think uh we want grocery, we want grocery stores to be accessible to everyone. No food deserts. Um, I think that we want uh a robust public transportation system that can get us to where we wanna go, especially as the price of fossil fuels continues to rise in the future. I think we're gonna appreciate alternatives. Um, I also think that if you are a senior citizen, then you probably want to take a car instead of ride a bike. And so there will likely be uh car lanes in the city for quite some time. I, you know, I lived in a.
Promise, is that a promise?
I feel like that's a, that's a promise I, I feel comfortable making. Um, I, I lived in a condo here for a number of years. I formed a great community um with the members of my uh, in, in my building. I was voted to be our elected president of the association against my objection. You know, it's uh, it's, it's not a bad way to live, I would say, but it's not for everyone. Um, as soon as we got a dog, we were like, oh, this, he's a rescue. His name is Pike. Uh, we were like Pike is gonna be way too big for this uh condo, despite what the foster mom told us his size would be. Uh, and so we had to, we had to buy him a yard, you know, because dogs deserve a place to run around and be dogs. Uh, and so I think there is also a place for single family homes in the city of Minneapolis. Uh, I do think we need to figure out where we want that place to be. Now, as it happens, war 12 has a lot of single family homes and a lot of people who are very active and wanting to keep their home see, as, as a single family home even after they die, which I think is a little extreme. I think there's some room for compromise there. Um, but in the critiques of the 2040 plan that I've been sent, the critiques that ring most true are not the environmental concerns. Although if the judge said the city didn't do what it was supposed to do, then I trust that the city did not do what it was supposed to do, which is unfortunate. But honestly, if we tear down all of our naturally occurring affordable housing and don't build two and three bedroom condos to replace it, where are families with kids gonna live? And I was like, well, that's a very fair question. And um I do think there is room for more conversation about uh single family homes in Minneapolis. Even though honestly, and this is probably the only libertarian streak I have. I take a dim view of the government telling me what I can and cannot build on my property, you know?
So, so would you say single family homes are at risk? Because I think if you looked at like the outcome of the 2040 plan, that the outcome has not been wholesale bulldozing of neighborhoods as the alarmist yard signs predicted. So, are, are single family homes at risk?
I, I would not call, I would not say, I would not say that I live in an at-risk si- single family home. But I, uh, but I think when it comes, I, I think people, particularly in war, war 12, wanna preserve a, a, a type of lifestyle that they see that has value, that is not available in the dense utopia that you spoke to, or at least they have not seen a good example of it in Minneapolis yet.
Let's, let's talk about commercial zoning. Are you familiar with the, let's see, the land use rezoning study? There's no reason necessarily that you would be, although your involvement with the neighborhood organization, maybe you are. So we've, we've implemented the, the built form uh zoning from the 2040 plan. And now the city has moved on to like looking at, well, what can you do inside those properties? So the structure, the size of the buildings, we've settled that. Now it's like land use. What can you do in the building? Can you open up a little shop? It, can it be used for industrial or is it only residential, things like that? And so we're deciding where in the city we can do those things. Do you think that uh the city's current limitations on commercial zoning, do you think we have it right? Or do you think we could use more commercially zoned areas? And I'm not talking about like adding a new target with a giant parking lot in the middle of your single family neighborhood. But like, for example, maybe opening up a little coffee shop in the first floor of a duplex or something? So, uh, you could take it wherever you want, but like, i- is there room to be expanding where people can open up little storefronts uh in, in ward 12 neighborhoods?
Okay, so I have not read up on that particular zoning issue. So if I make any mistakes, please do correct me to the extent that you're able to. But I can tell you in general, like as a small business owner myself, we need more small businesses. Um, I think that Minneapolis, in Minneapolis, we like to call ourselves as being um, uh, business friendly. But we are corporate friendly more so than we are small business friendly in my mind. Uh, and so I wholeheartedly support the coffee shops and the florists and the, the bridal shops and the like. And, but, and also I want them connected to uh along transit corridors to other neighborhoods. So you can go, you know, from 34th Avenue in Nakoma's East over to some, some new place, maybe even outside the ward though. Why you'd ever wanna do that? I don't know. Um, yeah, I, I, I fully support that.
Okay.
With the caveat that I haven't read it.
So it's, it's about opening up, it's about zoning and opening up in more places, so not just where it's currently allowed.
Against opening up more coffee shops. We love coffee shops.
So the idea would be, oh, you're gonna open up a, a little coffee shop in, on my street. What about parking? Uh, so it's the potential that it would expand beyond just commercial uh corridors.
Okay.
So an expansion of.
It's a parking issue.
I mean, it could be a parking issue or it could be a noise issue, you know, all the, all the normal zoning issues that people have.
I chaired a few meetings, community meetings regarding um some development in the Nakoma's East area. And uh, they either built around or tore down one, uh, one story building and built a two-story building with some office space, I believe, on top and a coffee shop in bottom of some other stuff. And people were very opposed to uh making the building larger. And I don't know how this, what, with, where the zoning was or what have you. So maybe this is not applicable, but I think it is. Um, because they were worried about other people parking in front of, in particular, uh, the homes of seniors and in front of the homes of people who have mobility issues. They, they were like, we love the idea of this building. This building is um going to employ veterans, uh formerly, it's gonna uh have a service center for formerly uh homeless veteran, veterans, love it. But we need to make sure that no one parks in front of, you know, my house because I can't get down the sidewalk and, and up the driveway and what have you. Like I need uh, I need access to my home. And so I really do think it's important to have uh that kind of community engagement wherever these new buildings are going up so that we can know what the real issue is that's uh leading people to oppose the development. Because sometimes it's not just like a parking spot. Sometimes it's like the parking spot that you need in order to get into the home that you can barely afford, you know?
Okay. Do you have a position on rent control?
Uh, as soon as we see St. Paul make it work, I will be uh likely in favor of it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's, that's an interesting position. Uh, so we're waiting, waiting on St. Paul to make it work?
Well, I have not seen a model that will work for Minneapolis. But I am encouraged to see uh St. Paul take the lead. They have encountered a couple of obstacles, so we've already learned from what they're experiencing. And if they are able to um put forward a model that works, then I don't really see much reason why it would not work here. But they get a lot of the bureaucratic headaches and the like. If they wanna take the lead on it, I don't see why we would not allow them to do so.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you like the immediate thing I can think of is. So we passed the, the ballot question uh in 21 for, to allow the, the city to put another question on the ballot to enact a policy. And so uh, the political argument is, well, the city wants it. And so now you are obligated to, to give it to us, put it on the ballot. the political argument is, well, the city wants it. And so now you are obligated to, to give it to us, put it on the ballot. So how do you, how do you push back against that? The city already voted for it and now you need to let us, let us vote again.
Well, if you, uh, show, I would, I would need to see the text. Um, but as of right now, I cannot envision text that would, work well for Minneapolis. Um, but you know, once again, we could, we would take it to community. We'd have a big conversation about it and we could, we could certainly do it that way. Now, it's my understanding that that is not what the council is doing. We seem to be taking the wait and see approach. Because it is significantly less expensive for Minneapolis to do that than to, than to present a bad policy, before the voters. But I can see that, I can see there being an additional argument.
So is, is the plan not to have it on the ballot this year? Cause we got the results from, from, uh, the work group. Maybe I'm not following the rent control.
My understanding is that the mayor is not planning on approving it if it goes through. And that there is not a veto proof majority on the council. But maybe things have changed over the last couple of weeks.
That, that could be. I'm not, uh, too deep in it, but I thought the council would put something out there. That was just my assumption. But, uh, that's interesting.
Well, let the audience, let the audience, uh, as following closer than we are, then please leave a comment and let us know.
Yes, please do. Okay, the city's homelessness response, uh, Jerome, I save all of the thorniest and most intractable questions, uh, for the end. To, to try to throw you off your game.
Is this still, is this the last one?
Uh, no, there, there's too much. We, we had too much fun at the beginning, Jerome. You caused us to have too much fun at the beginning and now we're running out of time.
Oh, I apologize. I apologize. Okay. Okay. Homeless response. Let's talk.
So where's the city's response to homeless encampments going wrong? What can you do as a council member? Uh, how should we be doing things differently?
I think the, um, the obvious place where we should be doing something differently is having, uh, MPD bulldoze, people's temporary homes and tents and belongings when they are clearing the encampments. Um, I went to, again, Vin Brewing, I feel like I'm plugging Vin Brewing a lot, but it's right across the street. Uh, I was there for coffee this time, I promise. And, uh, a constituent, a future constituent was saying, you know, it breaks, my heart, see, these people who have so little, have that taken away from them, by an entity that I, I already have such deep mistrust for. And our conversation continued because I also think about what it does for the, to the officers. When we ask them to engage in these dehumanizing activities, over and over and over again. And then we act surprised when later on, they act, uh, in a dehumanizing way with, with other people, you know? Um, now at the heart of it, I believe, as far as I've gotten so far, seems to be communication. Um, I think if Minneapolis, if our stance is that we are not going to allow encampments, or we will only allow encampments under circum circumstances or what have you, we need to be very clear, on exactly what that means. And if we say that this encampment is going to be cleared on Tuesday, then that encampment needs to be cleared on Tuesday, not the next Wednesday, not Thursday, but we need to do what we say. Because, uh, it sends a mixed message to people. When, you know, they might see a notice that says, oh, this encampment is going to be cleared. But they know that our actual response is going to be delayed. So it says Tuesday, but we're actually not going to show up until, three weeks later. We need to say what we're going to do and do what we're going to say with regards to the encampments. Uh, and we need to do it in a humane, dignified way.
Okay, let's talk about transportation. Uh, how do you get around the city? You know, what, what's, what's your transportation mix?
It depends on the season. It depends on the season. It depends on a lot of things. Um, I would say.
Are you ever on a bus?
Yeah, I took a bus the other day. And I can tell you, the bus stop right now is covered in, it's covered in snow. There's snow on the bench. There's snow on the, snow around the thing. Uh, I don't, I don't appreciate that. Um, I went, I, so the Public Health Advisory Committee takes place downtown. In the new Public Services Building, I take the train there. Uh, I go, I'm on the train while the sun's up. I'm coming back while the sun's down to very different experiences. I feel much more comfortable. When the sun is up on the train. Um, I take a car. Sometimes, uh, I try not to. I walk to the, I, I walk, I walk to my gym across the street. Oh, and in the summer, we bike a lot. My, uh, my husband has like a 20 mile loop around the city that he takes. So I use multi, many modes of transportation. No, no hot air balloons, no helicopters.
So you mentioned the, the sun up, sundown distinction. What, what's that about?
Oof, um, you know, the, uh, maybe a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, my, as I was walking to the gym, basically climbing over a snowbank, my phone fell out of my pocket. Uh, had my workout, was like, oh, where's my phone? Went back to my computer, did find my, uh, Android. I'm an Android person. Um, and I saw that it was on train heading up to Lake Street. And I said, oh, okay. Well, let me, you know, it's still two in the afternoon. Let's go, let's go to Lake Street and find that, find out where it is. I wasn't able to find it. Um, went back home, husband comes back. He's like, come on, let's give it one more go. So we went back up to Lake Street. This was by car. At, at like six o'clock. So you know, it's darkest midnight at six o'clock in January in Minneapolis. And it's like, all, the social contract has been broken. And where, where we were, John, people are in the streets, they're back and forth. There are nonprofit groups and sweatshirts worried about me walking around looking for my phone. Cause they think I'm not going to be safe. Um, and so, yeah, half an hour, I can't find the phone. I'm not going to say publicly where I think it was. That's not, that would be cool. Um, I bought a new phone, so it's fine. Um, but a couple of days later, there was a shooting at that Lake Street Station, uh, where we just were. So I, it just feels very unsafe because people have been shot there recently.
What do, what do we do about that? I?
Yeah.
So.
Good, great question.
If I can avoid, I, I ride the bus all the time and like riding the bus is fine from my perspective. If I can help it, I will take a bus rather than taking the light rail. And so, uh, because of issues, uh, that, that you met, like what you just mentioned. So what, what do we do about that?
Yeah. And you know, I bought, part of the reason I bought this fixer upper house is because it's right there by the blue line. And I was like, that's a feature. You know, it's transportation. Um, metro, not metro, the Met Council has dropped the ball. Um, it's, I know, I, I feel like very recently, I read an article in the Strip where someone was testifying that they were shocked by how the reports of crime, had jumped up by so much, uh, on our transportation system. And I'm, I think we were all like, we are not shocked. And I think the shocking thing is that you are supposed to be in charge and you are shocked by what's going on. I can tell you after that shooting, there were people, um, on the train the next day. I think, I don't even know where I was. I think I was going to the mall. Um, there are people on the train the next day, uh, at every couple of stops, people are coming on and they weren't checking fares. Or anything. They were making their presence known. Now, I don't really buy into the idea that people knowing that police are there are going to keep them from committing crimes necessarily. Uh, but I was reassured that they were there. I did feel safer, uh, with people checking in, knowing that someone was watching. I didn't think that they were going to be able to prevent a crime, you know? Um, but if something is going on and I need to get off and I need to tell someone that something really awful happened. Uh, it would be nice to know that there was an easy way to do that. And I think that's low stakes. Uh, and if I can gripe a little bit, I think if they weren't so over budget on the expansion, then they wouldn't be cutting corners on safety and security, uh, at the, on light rail.
It sounds like you're pandering to Ken Wood with that last answer, but Ken was not in ward 12, so.
It's too bad. Yeah, I, I wasn't intentionally pandering, so.
So we're, we're at 59 minutes and I have a little bit more left for you, Jerome. And I feel like I'm allowed to, to go long because again, you made the, the beginning so much fun.
Please do.
So one of the debates about transportation that we have is like, you know, you've gone too far with the bus lanes and the bike lanes kind of thing. And, uh, I, I cherish my parking and I have to park right out front. And so, in order to try to get at the, where candidates really stand on this, because people on controversial topics don't want to give you a straight answer.
Yeah.
So like, if I could put it very simply, like, have we gone too far in the direction of transportation alternatives?
No.
Is the city striking the right balance? We, we haven't gone too far. We, there are more, there is more, more to do on things, like pedestrianizing streets and bus lanes and bike lanes. More to do.
Thumbs up.
Okay. We, I guess we can leave it there.
Was this a lightning round answer? I thought you wanted to.
I don't, I don't have a lightning round.
Yeah, of course, of course there's more to do, you know, uh, climate change is real. We're not going to hit our emissions targets. If we're all driving around in our individual vehicles, we have an affordability, cost of living crisis that's only going to get worse over time. And if we are going to be future forward in our transportation policy, then we, we, we have to do more. Um, that said, like I mentioned earlier, you know, cars are not gonna go away overnight or, or anything. But, uh, there are going to be more and more people who have limited choice but to take public transportation to get to where they need to go. Um, coming up in the next decade or so. And so I would really prefer for the city to be, to be ready for that. And I will not go on a tangent so we can get to the next one.
One thing I'd like to introduce into the transportation conversation though, is we often talk about like seniors and parking as if seniors only drive. There are a lot of, there are some seniors who bike. I know we talked about that a little earlier. There are seniors on the bus. There was a Star Tribune story about a woman, who has suffered a horrific injury.
Yeah.
At a, at a bus stop.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, uh, seniors are, are not always in cars is just, uh, something I'd like to, to put into this.
Oh, I, I agree. I agree with you that seniors are not always in cars. That was not tough to agree with.
So, uh, so can you say, and I'm not afraid to admit it? Can you say that and then I'll cut it and make you look weird?
And I'm not afraid to admit that, John.
Okay, we're, we're at the end, Jerome. Did you come prepared with, uh, recommendations to give to our audience? Or do you watch the, or listen to the podcast at all? We asked.
I haven't had a chance. No, tell me, tell me about it.
That's fine. I, I don't, I don't watch bathroom bottomless, uh, coffee.
I mean, that, that sounds like some compelling content, bathroom bottomless. Yeah.
Or bathroom.
Someone, someone who's watching this conversation watches that.
Don't denigrate my audience. Okay, so this could be, this could be a hobby of yours. A piece of entertainment, a video game, a movie, some music and experience, a place in the neighborhood that you enjoy walking. What, what are you enjoying that makes you happy? That can make someone else happy? You, you just want other people to be doing it.
Yes. Okay. There is a book series that I love, um, by Brandon Sanderson called The Stormlight Archive. And the reason that I love it is because every protagonist in the series is deeply flawed. And as they, uh, come to grips with, uh, their past trauma and begin to heal, they heal beyond their normal human selves and develop, uh, these, these like kind of like powers, that allow them to help other people. And they, um, all have, uh, their, their tin orders, not to get in the weeds. Their tin orders and they all have one core, uh, code that they live by. And it's life before death, strength before weakness and journey before destination. And that always, um, reassures me during tough times or before tough decisions or, uh, before I do crazy things like launch a city council, uh, race. It's, it keeps me grounded, I think.
Okay. Well, thank you, Jerome. This went, uh, quite a long time, but I appreciate you sticking with me through it.
Oh, it's entirely my pleasure. Again, that website is Jerome T Evans dot com. J E R O M E T E V A N S dot com. And John, you are awesome. You're really, you're really good hosts. You, uh, you should do this for a living.
Thank you, Jerome. That means a lot coming from a fellow, uh, podcasting professional. I wish you the best of luck with your, your show, uh, bathroom, uh, bathroom coffee.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Obviously it's bo- bottomless coffee. That is, that's the entertainment, uh.
Correct. Bottomless coffee with Jerome.
Okay, my guest has been Jerome T Evans. He's running for city council in ward 12 here in Minneapolis. Uh, this has been the Wedge Light Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. Thank you for listening.